Okay, let's uh. I noticed lots of people getting brownies and uh other goodies out there. I may disappear to get a coffee at some point, but for the meantime, here we are. Thanks very much. You have beautiful day out. But I think this will be a very well worth period of time this morning. So, welcome to everyone and thanks for coming, keeping lending me to keep this close to my mouth. This is, I'm Don McFarlane and I'm the president of the Mono-Monarch Citizens Coalition. Members of our board and from the council. Thank you very much, folks. First of all, we would like to start with the land acknowledgement and Jill Johnson is going to do, read that if the chief disappeared. No, here she is.
Hi, good morning. Tiantanati, the Adewandran, the Honee and the initial acknowledge that Mono resides within the treaty lands named under Treaty 18, the Nato-Saga Purchase of 1818. These traditional territories upon which we live and learn are steeped in rich indigenous history and traditions. It is with this statement that we declare to honor and respect the past and present connections of indigenous peoples with this land, its waterways and resources.
Thank you very much, Jill. One additional note, which I just reminded myself of, would you please turn off your cell phones just in case? I'm very easily distracted, so it's good to have that done. And I even turned mine off, so you're safe. Howdy, folks. How are you doing? Today's meeting is jointly sponsored by the Mono Council and MC Squared, which is the Mono-Monarch Citizens Coalition. We have two main items on our agenda for today. First, we will have our speaker, who is Dr. Claus Hartman, who works with the Alliance for Liveable Ontario. He will be making a speech and then have some time to answer questions. And then the second half will be the opportunity for people in the audience to address questions to the Mono Council. We really appreciate you guys being here today. This lovely Sunday. Oh no, it's Saturday. Feels like some. I didn't go to church, so I know it's okay. And so the, we will have the, the question, the deal with question periods is we've got a nice group of people here. We want to give as many possible. And if you know me well, you know I've never asked a question that took longer, less than 22 minutes. So what we're trying to do is to get as many audience members involved as possible. So we're asking you to be concise and short with your questions. And give everybody, give as many people as possible the opportunity to, to to ask their, to raise their concerns and ask questions. We also have, we canvassed our members of MC Squared and asked them if any of them had questions. And we do have some questions from them, which will be, morning Louis. We, we have, we have a bunch of questions from, from members, so we'll, we'll mix those in. But please be ready with your questions, but please be concise. Before we get going, I'd like to introduce the members of the council. They, they sort of, they've got name tags. That's really cool. I was gonna ask them to stand up, but now you don't have to do that. I'd just like the mayor John Krillman, Fred Nix is the deputy mayor, Elaine Capes, Melinda Davey and Ralph. So, Ralph Magdalena. You notice I slipped out of doing the indigenous thing. I'm very big on pronunciations, but so anyway, thanks very much for coming in. And I think that this has been a joint effort with, with our board members and with the council members and the staff. And I should thank Fred Susan a lot because he's sort of been the, he's figured out how to get mediaism microphone, which is a big deal and, and stay on screen. So anyway, those are the introductions. I'd like to spend two or three minutes telling you about MC Squared. Who with the council is the co-host. It was an organization started in the 1980s. We had our 30th anniversary back when I was young and I'm sort of. We've been around. Our main objective when we formed the organization was to provide an interface between citizens and the councils. Over the years, we have been had observers at many of the council meetings. And currently, we put out a new monthly news bulletin to our members, which reports on key issues in the community and on council priorities and meetings. Over the years, we've also been key participants in addressing significant issues being faced by our communities. Issues such as water taking, gravel dumping, land use. There's always a big list. We've also supported other very focused groups in the, in the, in the community. People like Core and Dactin, these people, we've worked very closely with them. We have several committees, particularly those focused on the environment and land use. We're looking right now at the mandates of those two committees. And we're questioning whether they should be separate or not, and whether there's some opportunity to join them together or not. What I would say is that we're always looking for volunteers to help out with this stuff. And so the board, the board of MC Squared, I'll make that plea for volunteers 230 times today, so you'll be. We have several committees, particularly those focused, as I said, okay, been there, done that. MC Squared operates through a board which currently has six members. We also benefit tremendously from a core of really dedicated volunteers who add skill and commitment to our work. So if you come to one of our board meetings, there's the board plus four or five of these folks who are extremely helpful. Well, we tend to focus on local issues. We also keep ourselves or try to keep ourselves informed on, and the community informed on broader issues which have significant issues in our communities. For example, housing. Clearly, this is a serious local problem with major implications at the provincial and federal levels. Thus, we have Dr. Hartman here to help us open our discussion in our community and in our group to better understand what the situation in the housing is and to help us define what we can do about it. Most years, we have also had other expert speakers. We did two memorable meetings on Lyme disease, which had large crowds and which really did a great job of communicating to the community what that issue was. Those were scheduled to end at noon and some of them went on till well into the afternoon. I'll try to avoid that today. It's too sunny out. We're okay. Last year, we had a great presentation on indigenous land use practices, deeply informative. And this meeting is keeping that kind of tradition going. So when you hear about MC Square, this is the sort of thing we like to do. We provided copies of our recent newsletter and information table over there. And we're always looking, oh, did I say this before? We're always looking for volunteers. Just a note, after Dr. Hartman finishes, he's got some stuff to pack up. We're gonna take a quick five minute coffee break. I can't do any longer than that without my coffee, so we'll do it, but we want to move quickly and I think that the second half of the meeting is also, will be very engaging and important. So five so minutes for him to get packed up and then we'll get back going again. Okay, the first, let's get to the first item on our agenda and I'm gonna introduce one of our highly valued volunteers. Doug Thompson, who's going to introduce our speaker. Fire away, sir.
Thank you, Don. It is my privilege to introduce Franz Hartman. He is the coordinator of the Alliance for Liveable Ontario and has a long history in building alliances and community engagement. Franz served as chair of the Ontario Green Belt Alliance in 2014 to 18 and coordinator of the alliance from 19 to 2024 and helped the alliance build vast community support, the green belt. Franz was the executive director of the Toronto Environmental Alliance for 11 years. He was also the environmental advisor to city councillor Jack Layton from 1998 to 2002. Franz has a PhD in political science, York University, enjoys science fiction and woodworking and lives in Toronto. Franz.
Thank you very, sir. Thank you very much for coming out this morning.
Francis, if I could do a public service announcement, we do have some chairs along here and there are some chairs in the back if anyone wants to have a seat. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, mayor, councillors, thank you so much for coming out Saturday morning. I know it's more than just for me, but you know, your presence is, is, is very much appreciated. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. I am going to be speaking mostly to them. My apologies for having my back to you. Name is Franz Hart and I am with the Alliance for Liveable Ontario. I'm gonna talk a bit about housing and how it impacts not just you here in Mono, but in places across Ontario, small cities, large cities, rural cities. I have to figure out how to use this now. There we go. What's the Alliance for Liveable Ontario? We're an alliance of over 200 organizations and 1,000 plus members. We represent farmers, environmentalists, land use planners, housing activists, people in the healthcare sector, even developers, residents associations, and we come together because we care about land use planning. We care about environmental protection. We care about farmland protection and we care about how all of this intersects with housing. Because we have a housing crisis that we all know and we got together and said, let's work together to come up with solutions that do not pit the environment against housing, housing and do not pit farmland protection against housing. As I said, we represent very, very broad sectors. We're nonpartisan. We're a project of a charity. And we've been working together since January of 2023. Just a bit about myself. I grew up in suburban Waterloo. Some of you may have been there. That's the house that I grew up in. It doesn't look like that anymore. My parents moved out of there in 2013. It's been dramatically changed, but I came from a, from a very suburban background. And this is where I live right now. You'll see that, that house there on, on the left. It's in downtown Toronto near Blorinduffren, three-story, single-family home. Excuse me. Four bedrooms. Our daughter lived there with us until she went off to university. We're across from it, inner city park. Beautiful, beautiful space. And that's the house that I actually moved into last Saturday. At this time, we were moving. That's in our backyard of the main house. That sits on where a garage used to be, a two-car garage. We got rid of that garage and we built this laneway house. And my, as I said, my wife and I moved in there on Saturday and we hope to grow old there. Why did we go in there? Because we, we wanted to age in place. We've designed it to age in place. It's also a place, we're now renting out the main house to a family with three children. So we're getting some rental income, which means that our retirement savings, instead of going down like this, will hopefully go like this. While, and it means that we get to stay close to our neighborhood and our, our friends, our neighbors and the community. We have a housing crisis. I think everybody in this room probably knows of somebody who is having a difficult time finding a place they can afford in a, in a, in a neighborhood they want to live in. Oh, careful. There we go. And in Ontario, kind of a nice way to, simple way to generalize this is that too many Ontarians spend more than 30% of their gross household income on, on rent and mortgage costs. 30% figure is something that the Canada Housing and Mortgage Corporation has, or Canada Mortgage Housing Corporation has been saying is, is a good indicator. If you're paying more than 30% of your gross family income or household income, you're probably spending too much. That number is much higher. It's closer to 45 to 50% for renters. And for people who wanna, wanna own a house, finding one where you can afford a mortgage is, is almost next to impossible. Moreover, people can't find the right sized homes in the neighborhood they want to live in. In Toronto, where I'm at, my daughter, who now lives in Ottawa, she has talked about moving back to Toronto, but she says I can't afford the rents. They're just too much and to, especially in the neighborhoods that I want to live in. And a lot of people also believe, and this is because this is what they've been told, especially since about 2018, 2019, is that if we want to have housing that people can afford, we have to sacrifice. Excuse me. We have to sacrifice environmental protection. We have to sacrifice farmland protection. That's what's in people's brains right now. And then in rural parts of Ontario, like where we are right now, rural residents actually have very few housing choices, especially for people who are aging in place. I look around the room, many of you are similar to my, to me in age. And you're thinking about or have been thinking about retiring and what, what do we do? And unfortunately, too often, and I can't speak to the specifics of Mono, but in many places across Ontario, the choice is, well, I kind of don't really want to stay in the place I'm in because I'm dependent on driving or it's too big or there's too many, looking after houses become too, too difficult. I would love, but I don't want to leave my community. I don't want to move far away. Problem is that the choices of housing available are far and few between, if at all. And that's a very unfortunate situation to be in. Nobody, especially when you reach my age and our age, really wants to move far away from your friends and families in your community. And many of us are then said, well, what do we do? Do we stay in a place that's not designed for aging in place? No, that's not really an option. Well, we can't move into the community because there's no housing for us. So you have to move far away and that creates a lot of problems. And that's a terrible situation to be in, especially given how beautiful you have it here in, in, in the Mono area. So why do these problems exist? I'm giving you this at a very, very high level because I don't have an hour, but I would say it comes down to three reasons. The first is we're building the wrong mix of housing types. I think most of you will recognize that the housing that you see on the left side there. Too many single-family homes in suburban areas, big houses that are less and less affordable. Or you get what, what we call in the business tall sprawl, these big 50, 60 story buildings. And we're not building enough, what's often called gentle density or missing middle housing. For example, my laneway house is an example of, of, of gentle density in, or five. Or, or, or what are called housing co-ops that some of you have heard of, which are, you know, 15, 20 story buildings with lots. We need to be building more of those and any of. And it will recognize the sort of housing on the right is you usually see. A housing on the left is what you see, except here in North America and except here in Southern Ontario. So we're building too many of the wrong type of housing. And we're also building in the wrong places. Natural areas are being. And what's the consequence of that? Using food security. Every time farmland is turned into housing, especially single-family expensive housing that people can't afford. Acre of, of farmland that could be used for food. And that's becoming especially important with tariffs and everything. And it's also make to, to the. Hawkley Valley, all of this area here provides a huge number of natural services, ecological services. If we had to actually pay for those, if we had to get people to, to, to provide all of these services, it would cost us 10 billions of dollars. So what, we are taking these beautiful ecological, environmental spaces and turning them into development. We are actually taking away free ecological services that are going to be to deal with the climate crisis that's, that's already here. And the third reason that we're, it's problems with the housing crisis. Excuse me, it's my allergy season, so I've got, yeah. Is we're no longer. Non-market housing is housing that is designed not to maximize profits for the private owners, but to, to, to be at cost. Things like housing cooperatives, nonprofit housing, et cetera. Market housing, homes every year. And across in, in many places in Europe, you know, the, the probably the, the gold standard of, of building non-market housing. Vienna and, and in Austria, I think something like 40 or 50% of all the housing in Vienna is. They still have vibrant private sector market that builds housing and provides housing, but stop doing. In the fall of 2024, the Alliance for Liveable, actually really hard that analyzed how the province has been doing on the housing front in the last, since 2022. And we essentially concluded the province is pushing the wrong type of housing in the wrong places and the prices. The changes that have been made to housing policies and land use planning policies have been fast and furious and mostly detrimental. There've been a few exceptions, but the vast majority have actually undermined of municipalities like Mono, like council, to build the right type of housing in the right places at the, at the, at the right prices. So the provincial government has not done what it should have done. It's done the exact opposite. And I'm sad to report that since they were re-elected, the bill five, which was introduced last couple of weeks ago and another bill that's supposedly going to be introduced in the next couple of weeks is going to make things worse. The housing crisis will not get better. It will get worse. And this report card, which we came out with in 2024, which is available on our website, livableontario.ca, goes into details as to why. And I can say it was written by a, a very prominent housing and, and planning expert who worked years, helped develop the green belt and who has been tracking all of this. So if we want to protect farmland, natural areas, costly and destructive suburban sprawl is demanding the right actions from government. And if we want the next generation of Ontarians to have housing that is affordable and part of livable communities, because we can't just build houses, we have to make sure the communities around them, the services are there. We need to make sure the public is demanding the right actions from government. So Alliance for Liveable Ontario found five actions that will do both. I want to, it's, and it's called part of our campaign, the report is called Take. Well, in Ontario, and I want to show you a three-minute video, which I'm hoping we can get full screen on this just so that people can see it. Here we go.
You probably know someone who can't find a home they can afford. It wasn't always like this. And while we can argue and debate about what happened and didn't happen, talking won't make affordable homes happen. So a bunch of us got together and found five ways that will. Number one, gutting farmland and nature to build McMansions in places where you need two cars and have to install expensive infrastructure is not the answer. We need to build in the right places, affordable, livable neighborhoods where people already live and want to live. And we already have enough ready to build room inside our towns and cities to do it. Number two, while everyone needs something different and affordable, too many of these are being built. We need to build a wide variety of housing types, low-rise, mid-rise, not-for-profit, multi-unit, multi-family, multi-bedroom. A multiplex of more affordable, appropriate options for every stage of life. Number three, the way most homes are built and the laws around building them are not built for affordability or speed. We need to build smarter and faster, like more wood frame and prefab panel homes and updating old rules like high-rises needing parking for everyone. We can cut costs and time with faster and smarter rules, approvals and building methods. Number four, for decades, our governments built and operated affordable, non-market housing. Then affordable housing stopped going up, but rents didn't. We need to invest heavily in non-market affordable housing. And we is our governments. Builders will build it, co-ops and other groups will run it, but our governments must invest in it because almost no one else is. Number five, we can't be hurrying like mad to approve and demolish and build without stopping to think about neighborhoods. We need to make housing not just affordable, but part of livable communities. Affordable means building in the right places, building smarter and faster and building more choices and more non-market homes. While livable means building neighborhoods, close, convenient communities that bring everything we need together, including each other. These are our five ways to affordability, but there's actually one more. We need everyone, governments, the private sector and nonprofit housing providers to work together to fix this. And we need you to tell your MPP that they've got five things to do to help everyone have an affordable, livable home now. Learn all that you can do at fivewayshome.ca.
So we created a website and a whole campaign around the reports. If you go to fivewayshome.ca, you'll come to, to this page. And on it, there's a lot of information, the full report, which has been endorsed by 40-plus prominent Ontarians, including, including people from all political stripes. Greg Cerbera, former finance minister under the Dalton McGinty government and part of the prominent developments family, David Miller, former mayor of Toronto, David Crombie, who used to be the, in the Brian Mulroney government, all were involved in that. Anyway, the website has sections on each of the five areas and a short one-minute video on all of that. And there's lots of information there and ways in which you can talk to people about these things. So we launched that in July of last year and 10 months on what's happened. Well, getting housing right has become even more important with the rise of, of Trump and the Trump tariffs. Affordability is going to become an even greater issue. And the need for provincial government policies that make homes people can afford is, is even greater today. So we thought it was bad 10 months ago when we did this. It's much worse today and it will get worse. So what can we do? Our goals over the next while is to let Ontarians know that their Five Ways Home actions are crucial. They're out there. This is not rocket science and this can be done. We, we are essentially taking the wisdom of past generations and from, and, and common sense and put, package it together in these five ways home. This is what we need governments to do. And doing it will also be good to, to Trump-proof Ontario and to make homes affordable. And we want to let Ontarians know that the province's plans right now, the direction they're heading, the ruinous sprawl plans are only going to make things worse. So we want to give people solutions. We want to show, and we want to show them that what's happening right now is going in the wrong direction at the provincial level. And we want to spread hope by saying there is a way forward. So what's the power that we have? Well, the power exists with, within all of us. I think we all know that our opinions are shaped by those we trust, our friends and our networks. And each of us, every one of you knows a lot of people. You have friends and networks that trust you. You also know that organized, there are organizations that have members that trust them. And collectively, this gives us a lot of power to influence many tens of thousands of people. And to use this power, we need tools to help us effectively connect with our friends and networks. If we all talk to our friends and networks about the solutions to housing, we can have an impact. We can create enough demand for the, for the province and the federal governments to do the right thing that they will do the right thing. We did that back in 2023 when Premier Ford had to reverse his decision to take, to take land out of the green belt and use it for housing, which was a really bad. to uh, take land out of the Green Belt and use it for housing, which was a really bad initial decision, and because of public pressure, he changed his mind. Um, we've created some tools, they're available on the Alliance for Livable Ontario website. Uh, you go there and go to the resources section, and it's called Weathering Tough Times Toolkit. Lots of information there, all the reports that I've been talking about are listed there, the videos are listed there. Ways in which you can use face uh, uh, social media are all there as well. And so what can you do today? Um, you can talk to your friends and families and uh, any organizations that you're part of about making homes affordable and part of livable communities uh, to help us weather the uh, the tough times we're ahead. You can spread hope by telling them, yep, there are ways that are out there that do not require sacrificing the environment and farmland protection. Um, you all have access to email and many of you have social media channels. You can promote our actions and resources. Um, and you can invite the ALO to speak at community events. Um, I've been going across the province to many different communities like this, talking to people and saying, hey, there is a way forward. So feel free to to invite us. And uh, if you like what we're doing, become a member and donate. And with that, I say thank you very much, and I would like to uh, if there's opportunity, question and answers, we'll do. Hey.
Okay, fire away. From it, why don't you just.
Or somebody could walk around with this mic and I could use this one.
Which you.
Oh. Okay.
Hi, my name is Fitzbarbo. Um, wait, this thing you under the sun way back in the nineteen eighties, I knew a rich fellow. He's a doctor in my regiment, and he said, uh, MURBS, multiple unit residential buildings. Uh, a good deal is where both people gain, where every dollar he put up, there was two dollars going into building um, residential, multiple units. And therefore he reduces taxable amount uh, by, and so if you have a lot of money, you ain't giving it away in taxes. But both people gain, so why don't we really stress MURBS? There's my question.
Yep, um, great suggestion. Okay, solutions. Um, here's the problem. For the last forty years, we have been told over and over and over and over again by key developers, not all developers, but by key developers, that everybody wants a single-family house on a large lot with a picket fence and a two-car garage. Um, and this is uh, this this and and would not only be told this is what you want, but if you if you your definition of success is getting that. And so we've been taught that over and over and over again. More recently, we've been that you, um, if you've got some money and. Really good for some key developers, it's been terrible for the rest of them. And that what has happened in the last four or five years is that those small number of developers who benefit from building single, large, single-family homes and these high-rise um, condo towers have convinced the province to change planning laws, in other words, to help them. And it's made it difficult to get MURBS built. Or it's made it or 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 it's made it much easier to do the wrong type of housing and made it more difficult for the right type of housing. The only way that changes is if the public says enough. We don't want that anymore. We want the right type of housing in the right places at the right prices. Um, so we want to see MURBS back. We need everybody to contact their MPPs because most of this is provincial. Uh, the province is the is the order of government that has the most impact on land use planning and saying enough of this wrong type of housing, start building the right type of housing.
Good morning, um, Sandy Brown is my name. Over the past few years, I learned about the Whistler Housing Authority. So you mentioned one of your five things is about non-market housing and you know, Whistler is a very affluent area. The staff who work in the hotels and in the restaurants, the dishwashers, housekeepers couldn't afford to live there. So the corporations, I think, the town decided to get together and build non-market housing. And last time I looked, they had something like two thousand rental units in the small town Whistler, which is pretty amazing. So maybe we need a Dufferin County Housing Authority. Um, and it earned over the past few years is um, frowned upon in academia, but in government, it should be celebrated. Absolutely. So what, as you're working, and I I point to that Whistler Housing Authority, I'd all of you do online. You know, the dishwasher, there's a there's a grid pattern of of the rent where the rents are paid, the dishwasher pays, you know, eight hundred dollars a month. The server at the steakhouse who's making a hundred thousand dollars pays. And they've done it, you know, uh, income-based. And it's been a very successful program and they get you to build it. And I'm mistaken, they're actually building uh, affordable-to-own properties now. Yeah, remember. So anyway, I just wanted to make that comment that the market and and here in Dufferin County, we have municipalities that own land. So you know, if that's the impetus to get into the business is you have that equity in the in the land. We can do this here, there's no question. So just want to make that comment. Thank you.
Yes, and and for for decades, this actually happened in Canada from the sixties and seventies. Uh, now, I will say as somebody who has some understanding of uh, of of finance, municipalities are extremely constrained with the money that they can raise for these sort of things. Um, uh, it's uh, because every year you have to have a balanced budget. Um, the federal government, on the other hand, has a lot of capacity to raise money that can be then used to finance the building of nonprofit housing. So frankly, this is a request that should go to the federal government. And it looks like the 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 new prime minister has at least suggested this might happen. Again, if you want to help make this happen, call your MP. I apologize, I don't know if your MP is new or or re-elected and and I'm not sure what party they're from. Uh, but um, uh, the federal government has the capacity to provide funding very low-cost mortgage to nonprofit housing providers, like there's a very vibrant housing cooperative movement in Canada and in Ontario uh, that can build these non-market housing and and provide at-cost housing. They need capital, they need money, that money can come from the federal government. Municipalities are very limited with how much money they can borrow. Uh, municipality may have land, but you want to make sure that the land is in the right places. You don't want land that's way far away, you want it to be close to to important community services.
I, uh, Leah Pressey. Hmm, one of the things that came up in my council.
Right.
We, there you go. We couldn't build restrictions associated with um, septic systems. So I'm wondering if you've done some research on that for areas like Mono and Monor and what that would, those solutions would.
I, but again, I don't think this is rocket science, and I think there are a lot of examples. Who was the gentleman before said, you know, in in academia plagiarism is frowned upon and government tourism should be encouraged. There are many, many ways of building um, of creating homes in rural areas that do not require complicated septic systems. It's um, more often than not, you know, how many of you have had it uh, at some point in your life engaged with builders or renovators? Yeah, we all have, right? And like all of us, it's like, well, you want me to be that I'm used to? Because I have to do it differently. It's more often than not, we do things out of habit as opposed to because they're they're um, they're the better way of doing it. And that's where government regulations come into play, because if you've government oh, from now on, we have to stop doing it this way and start doing it that way. Then it's like, okay, everybody's going to have to learn how to do that. I mentioned this simply to say, there are a lot of, there are a lot of, there's a lot of technology out there that um, can overcome, all of them you talked about. It's just a question of convincing people to do it more, more often than not, getting governments to create the right sort of regulatory environment to encourage positive things happening. Um, electric vehicles is an example of that. Uh, but there are many more out there from from a building perspective. I mean, one one other quick thing, I mean, now, energy efficiency in buildings is kind of, everybody nods their head. I remember when I started off, you know, that was, you talked about energy efficiency to builders and they looked at you as if you were asking them to, you know, cut their left arm off. Now, everybody realizes, okay, if I put more insulation in my home, it's actually going to save me money. And so the whatever upfront cost there is with with making the home more energy efficient, I'm going to get paid, it's going to be paid off in spades by savings, right? That took time, but we need to push those sort of changes and and septic systems are an example of that.
Okay, uh, my name's Bob McColl, living south Mono. Since we're at a Mototown Hall here, uh, I'd like to put this in perspective with regards to the town of Mono. Uh, town of Mono, uh, we do not have easily serviced land. Uh, and uh, the chances of that happening in the near future are probably not. Uh, I was the chair of the quality advisory committee here for over twenty-five years. And one of the most recent uh, proposals for development was a ninety-nine acres in South Mono, uh, the second one, three hundred and thirty-five small homes, none of which were going to be considered to be affordable. However, uh, that there was no water for that project. It was going to require a communal septic system. There was two communal septic systems in and out, both of which are disasters. A friend of mine that lives there, one of them is here working today. Uh, so this is the reality of the situation in the town of Mono, which is why we're here today. So uh, will we ever have those kinds of developments in Mono? Probably, I'll be long and dead, and many of us will be. But uh, your presentation is interesting and yes, it's an issue. But I I really, you know, think that we as the town of Mono uh, need to understand, bro, the challenges that we we have here and the you nod in your head, you know that they're real, so.
Absolutely. And I mean, these, this um, the presentation I gave is generic, it's uh, most Ontarians live in cities. Um, and I know that, you know, many of those things may not apply here. That being said, if you're, and and I don't know Mono well enough to be able to kind of make any sort of um, comments informed comments, so I may be completely wrong here. But it's up that there is a particular area, it makes sense to put development in there. If you're going to do that, if that's the road you want to go down, if you want to make a villa, uh, uh, you know, if there's an existing villa, you want to expand or whatever. Um, just make sure you're building the right sort of housing in the right places at the right prices, right? That's the key thing. Um, you know, too often, what I've heard from groups that across Ontario is, yeah, developer comes in and wants to build, you know, single-family homes in this big subdivision far away. They're going to make potentially a lot of money, but it does nothing for the residents there. Make sure every development you're doing is, in in my planning world, is called complete communities. Uh, it's designed for people to walk around so that if you're old, getting older like me, um, you know, you don't need a car. If you have a chance to to make something from scratch in an existing space, just make sure you do it properly. Don't simply fall on the single-family home or, you know, ten-story high-rise options, there are many more out there.
Okay. One question, and then we went here and back, then we got.
Is it Dr. Hartman's? Got it there, what?
Hi, I'm Dave Moore. I want to follow up on on Bruce's point about the multiple unit buildings, and I want to sort of address it to our council. Is there any provision in our current official plan for those kind of buildings in the town of Mono? Is there even a possibility for people to build a second residential unit on their property? I think I know the answer, but I'll wait for you to give it to me.
Would you like us to address that right now? Okay, I'm going to defer to my colleagues and then I have some thoughts. One want to chime in?
Harold, you're you got.
Okay, um, the 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 short answer is that our official plan needs to be updated badly. And uh, if uh, if we don't provide for it, we should, in my view. Uh, the other aspect of our zoning and official plan uh, scheme is that we have a minimum house size. And I have been saying for years that we should do away with that because it's basically discriminatory against tiny homes. And I think tiny homes are uh, uh, in part an answer to the question of whether you can put up a second residence on a uh, on a property. I think the answer to that is 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 yes. But again, you want to do it in such a way that it's, there's proper servicing, there's proper septic and water and and that kind of thing. But uh, I think we're all committed to looking at those things and moving as quickly as we can.
Can I just point out, I I agree with John, our our official plan needs updating, but interestingly, while it historically has not allowed multiple homes on a lot, uh, if a if a landlord wants to do that, they've applied for um, a special condition to Bob McCray. And in in every case in my uh, fifteen years on council, they've been approved. So we do have lots with we have one with five homes on it. Okay, so I'm I'm I do agree with you, Dave, our official plan needs changing. But interestingly, every time a landlord is wanting to do this, we've allowed it.
Thank you, yes, I, uh, it's very, very interesting. Thank you for your your talk this morning, Mr. Hartman, the Dr. Hartman, sorry. Yes, our official plan doesn't have it itemized because we're not a a, wow, sorry. I don't know what's it, because I don't, I don't have allergies, but I got something tickling there. Um, it doesn't, because we're we're rural, and so our our um, urban settlement areas have gone along the way of having the single family because, you know, I mean, I don't know that we should really say that it's a terrible dream for everybody to have had for the last few generations, and here we are. So, but the, does the official plan need to be changed? I don't know, because you've got to be very careful, we'll lose our rural, and if there's a large, oh my, we need homes, then you know, it's a real balance going on. So does our official plan need to be looked at? I think yes, and I think that we are doing that with respect to, we've got a long list for our clerk to be coming up with new ideas about monster homes and setbacks and um, landscapes and all all sorts of things, and and including the new discussions from the the province saying about severability and so on, right? They're all being changed the um, but to actually say, oh, yes, our our official plan needs to be changed. I think we need to be very careful about Mono and the idea of trying to maintain what we've always had here, which was the beginning part of your presentation. Um, that's really important and 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 needs to be cherished, I think.
So just to jump in on that, I didn't, my apologies if I suggested that having a single-family home is a bad thing. Think of it this way, everybody is told you have to have a blue shirt. If you don't have a blue shirt, you're not successful. That's that's kind of the, I know, that's why I said that. Um, the whole point is that we should have a diversity of options that people people can choose from. And I I'm not sure it's appropriate to say people with blue shirts are better than anybody else, so. Um, but just on a couple of things about about um, uh, number of units on a property. The province introduced in one of the more recent, uh, one of the recent bills, I think the offer, the idea that anyhow, any property in Ontario, I think, can have three units as a right. Um, so and I think that supersedes your official plan, so that can happen. The other thing is, if you're interested, if you have a property or if you have a house on your property, there are ways of converting that into multiple units. Um, there's a great website called rehousing.ca that has a whole bunch of kind of um, uh, uh, template plans about how you can uh, uh, renovate, refurbish an existing single-family suburban house into multiple units. And it provides an opportunity, this this website gives you a visual way of saying, hey, that looks interesting, maybe I'll get that, and then you can take it to your architect. Many people are beginning to say that one. Many people are beginning to say that one way to deal with aging in place, I've got this big house, I don't know, I can't live in it anymore. Okay, get it renovated, design it so that, uh, two or three or four or five families can live there. Maybe you add on some more space, now all of a sudden, you've got a community around you, and it makes it much easier to kind of age in place there.
Good morning, everyone, um, my name is Moro Tastani, um, I've been part of Mono since nine, since I was born. My dad bought the property, we used to grow potatoes on it. Um, everything you said is wonderful, and I always ask this question, and like you said, it's not rocket science, we need to build more homes. But we don't wanna develop land, so what do we do? How do we protect the land and build more houses, right? Um, to the gentleman in the front here, like the hoops that an average person wants to go through to try to add, put an addition on, or deal with NEC. Or another conservation, or someone else, cause there's seventeen thousand different bodies governing what I do with my land. How do you help us that wanna do that? How do you make multi-generational, you talked about Europe, Austria, well, I'm an Italian background. In Europe, you lived with your grandparents, you looked after them, you looked after your parents and your kids and say for it. How do you, how do you do that, how does council do that? How do, how do we allow this? Because if I wanna put an addition on, or I wanna build a second home, and at the same time. You know, it seems like you're jumping through hoops every time, and I don't wanna have to hire a planner. I just wanna submit a set of drawings, I want the guidance of the town, that's why they're there, hopefully, to help us do that. You know, it just, it just, it's sort of, everyone's got these wonderful ideas, but nobody has a real solution, is what I'm feeling. And, you know, province says one thing, NEC says something else, conservation source says another thing, town says something, then you go to Dufferin, it's a whole different story, it's like. It's just too many levels dictating what we can and cannot do, or what, what we wanna put forward. You know, I just, just putting it out there that we need it more simplified. And to add on to, to that, cost. Why does it cost, why does a house cost so much? Well, how much does a building cost, how much does development charges? Why is land so expensive? You know, you don't wanna expand greenbelt, honestly, when greenbelt came in, in my personal opinion, was a cooperation between developers and government, because. If there's a shortage of land, price goes up, if there's an abundance of land, price comes down, simple as that. So, how do you bring the cost of the price of land down, right? And why does it cost so much, how are our taxes keep going up? I don't understand, like, services aren't changing. Like, we started thinking, bringing down the cost of keeping our houses, and keeping, keeping them, or, and developing it, right? Thank you.
Yep, so you wanna do the right thing, you wanna, um. If I've, I've understood correctly, you know, wouldn't it be great if you could turn your property into multi-generational housing, build some housing? But in order to do that, you've got these, you've got these, um, hurdles. You've got a whole bunch of regulations, you've got the cost hurdle. So I'm a PhD in political science, I spent most of my earlier years, um, trying to understand how government works, why it does things in particular ways. And then I spent most of the rest of my life, you know, talking to governments, trying to get them to change what I think are bad things to make them better, so I have some experience with governments. And, in, in the case here, things, um, urban planners, most people don't really understand, um, and I didn't until I started looking into this. The incredible value of urban planning. You know, it doesn't, in Mono, you know, it's a bit small, there's not as many people living here, right? The density is much lower than where I live in, in downtown Toronto. But trying to get everybody to, living in a place, to kind of coordinate, to cooperate. To come up with basic rules to say, okay, this is a good thing, that's a bad thing, you need somebody to kind of moderate that, right? You need somebody to say, well, you know, if you put a septic here. It may seem like, you, you may not think of, uh, it, it may seem clear to you. But there's actually groundwater underneath, and if you do that there and you're not, not done properly. Your neighbors, you know, and. Butters down, could actually be harmed by that. How do you know that? You wouldn't know that, because, you know, you, that, that's not, you're, you're just focusing on your land, right? So a lot of the rules and regulations that are there come from out of necessity. Yes, they're a drag, but if we didn't have them, it would be a lot worse. And I think this is what people kind of, it's the old, you don't re, value something or that, un, until it's not there anymore, and then you go, oh my goodness, look at how important this was. And I think this is what we're gonna find out with urban planning, and what's happened with the province in the last while. This getting rid of rules and regulations seems on the surface, wow, it's gonna make things easier. It will for a short time, until the consequences come, come into play. Oh, yes, absolutely, abso, and helping the person. Yeah, yeah, and the problem is, and this is what I was saying earlier, challenge is that. The changes that have been made to the rules and regulations are not designed to help you. They're designed to help a small number, to be blunt, of, 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 uh, friends of the premier. And that's the problem, right? Because rules and regulations are all, have always been there, the question is, interest do they serve? And I would argue, as with many others, that the interests being served now are not you, you and I. They're, they're, you know, very powerful, small number of people, that's the problem. Number two, the cost issue, I don't know how to, kind of, um, you know, why, why are costs, what? Development charges are, are now seen as the big boogeyman. Um, I can tell you, if you get rid of development charges. Guess who's gonna be paying for the creation of the infrastructure that's needed and for the maintenance? Property taxes, exactly, so somebody's gotta pay for that. And are development charges the best way? Maybe it's a tool that is no longer useful. But getting rid of them without coming in with a new tool and a new way of financing it, means all your property taxes are gonna go up. So sure, be against development charges, but make sure that you have another option for paying these, uh, for paying all the costs required for development before doing so. Otherwise, your taxes are gonna go up significantly. I'm okay for having five minutes, but.
You got more critical than I thought this.
Okay.
Can you run it? Yep, I need to. Oh, you can shut up. Here, let's, like, you're, you're all old, we don't care very much.
Okay, um, so I'd like to, instead of asking a question and offer a solution. No, yeah, uh, Rob Ballston. Uh, I'm a retired engineer, I moved up here thirteen years ago. Um, looked for a, uh, five-acre property, couldn't find one. Ended up getting a twenty-five acre property. Um, had to deal with Ottawa Saga Conservation. A, a lot of rules, regulations, I brought in a ground water expert. Uh, living about, uh, septic's. Um, a lot of the requirements, and it's maybe not rocket science, but it gets fairly complicated. But I finally figured it out and, uh, got a place burnt. But anybody else that wants to do that has to go through all of that effort and the same learning. So one possible solution is, uh, have some people or a person. As, um, a help group or advisor to say, okay. I, I wanna add an addition or expand my house. Uh, let's talk to somebody that's done it before, so you don't have to recreate the wheel each time, and it's not so complicated. And maybe, you know, how do I get financing? Maybe I have to sever my property so I can get a mortgage from your bank. There's lots of solutions, but it can be very complicated. And if, you know, there's a number of people that have learned how to do it, let's get together and help other people that wanna do that.
Thank you, Bruce.
Okay, um, yeah. I know that you have twenty more today. Uh, just a quick note of thanks, are you okay, Wayne, you, you wanna? Or what, two words?
Two words, I'm not gonna go on as long as Dawn, but I am gonna.
Safe there, that's impossible.
So, thank you all for coming here today, and thank you for the very insightful questions that you've been asking, and thank you to our presenter. Um, I do have to state that you all need to pay attention to what Dufferin County is doing. In terms of housing, and they have a housing strategy, and it's too bad, if I had known the content of this, it might have been good to have somebody from the county come. And speak to all the numerous programs they have around housing and homelessness. There are a number of task force, there are a number of work groups, there is a homeless, homing stra, a housing strategy. But there were some very good points raised, and yes, uh, Leah, I believe it was, was talking about septic limitations. And then Bob McCray, thank you for, uh, bringing the reality, and also, um, you know. That, there is a lot of good things that were said today, so I think we need to take those away and think about them. We do have an official plan, it does say things. But guess what? It says things, developers come in and say, I don't care what that says, I'm gonna take you to the O L T. And then that ends up costing all these taxpayers money, because they don't respect our O P. And they don't respect what we want in Mono, and they wanna build their own. And I, in fact, uh, did point out to the developer of the hand property, that we would like and welcome a complete community. And, uh, he didn't have anything to wanna think about that. So, uh, there's some been very good points, and I do have to also say that I like that last idea. Lived experience is very important when you have any of these conversations, and so you're talking about people with lived experience of going through certain things. And we should explore, and maybe that's a good idea, something to put on your list at M C squared. Okay, excellent, excellent, but, um, also, um, I wanna point out that the gentleman who was with the province. Who came up with all of the good land use planning, was a speaker at an M C squared A G M meeting some years ago. Was a speaker at an End Act meeting when we were fighting the mega quarry, and guess what? He was fired, because he said there was enough land to build all of the houses that we needed to build. We didn't have to take away the green belt, we didn't have to take away more farmland, so, he lost his job, anyway. Thank you for, for your, uh, presentation.
Okay, just a quick word of thanks for taking the time to come up here and meet us at the Vaughan subway station. I drove into Toronto the other day, and I'm very sympathetic to the subway. Uh, thanks for coming up, and I think that as an organization. We had a very interesting discussion about two or three months ago, and saying we have to get housing onto our agenda. That's when your name came up, and some of the people that's in our board saw you speaking very enthusiastically, so. This may be a longer-term organ, uh, relationship, and certainly will get involved with your organization. In the meantime, thank you very much for coming, and I know that, uh, this isn't the easiest place to get to, but boy, is it ever nice when you get here, so thank you. Thank you, and I will, I will say, thank you to all of you for coming out on a Saturday, Saturday morning and caring about your community. That is absolutely crucial. Um, and I think, you know, if, if the world was full of people like you who cared, and it doesn't matter that you have different opinions, in fact, that's what, that's where the strength is. This is how we build livable communities, is by people coming together with different ideas and brainstorming. Who all say, yep, we wanna end up here, and let's have a discussion about how we get there. And having a council that wants to join you in, in these sort of discussions, this is how we make livable communities, so, so thank you to all of you. Very, very nice way to wrap up the first half. And so what I'm saying now is, let's take fi- five minutes, six minutes. Uh, Dr. Hartman's gonna get his stuff cleared up and get his plugs out. And, uh, we'll, uh, get back here in about five, six, seven minutes and, uh, get back to talking to our council, and I think that has proven very helpful, thanks. People can hear you, wonderful, that. Anyway, thanks a lot for sticking around, but I think the goods are fantastic, and all of them delicious. So what we're gonna do now is start with questions for the council. Uh, it, but that part of the meeting is gonna be chaired by Doug again. And with the. They would like to get as much as we could, so we're looking at concise. And my, my try, my. Whereas I never cut you off in the middle of a sentence, but try to keep it to a minute, minute and a half, and so we can get. Everybody who has a question, and we saw at the end, we had people who wanted to be included, and good, that's why we're here. So I get this section, but if you is, as you wanna ask questions, come up to the front, there's a microphone there. And if you, if you have two or three people in line, that'll make it more efficient in terms of highly, highly move through this, so I'm gonna have it over to you, sir. Where do we go? Thank you, um, any questions? Now, there are wonderful prizes for those who come up and ask questions, weren't there prizes, Dawn? Okay, back on my TV, uh, state your name and, uh, your question, please.
So just before you do that, I wanna make sure people understand why we need you to muse, use the mic, it's so that it gets into the recording. Yeah, so thank you for that.
Hi, is this working? Okay, wonderful, my name is Victoria Fraser. I live at three oh seven two eight five Hockley Road in Mono, with my husband, we own the property there. Just across from the planned, uh, Bruce Trail route from the south of Hockley Road, across to the north of Hockley Road. To run from the McKitchen Nature Reserve, um, across four privately-owned properties, uh, to get up to the Hockley Valley Nature Reserve. And I wanted to address specifically to council, um, the Bruce Trail access to the town-owned land. I'm aware that the, um, town does not have control over the privately-owned properties. So we just wanted to let them know that their decision with respect to the use by the Bruce Trail of the town-owned land. Also affects my use and enjoyment of my personal property, as well as the safety of the public. Um, and property taxes for the, uh, the whole of Mono, and I'll explain that, it will be brief. Um, essentially, there are four extremely narrow lots, um, in between the McKitchen Reserve and my house. Uh, it's a short walk to my neighbor's house, which is back along to the McKitchen Reserve. I can see the town-owned land from my west-facing window, and there's one privately-owned vacant lot in between my house and the town-owned land. So essentially, people walking across that property would be visible from my house, and, uh, would affect my use, my pets, and the three pets of the living properties. The other concern as a lawyer, occupational hazard, is, um, occupation, occupiers liability with people that might wander off the trail. And fall into themselves on my land, because the Bruce Trail insurance only covers my land, and it's very densely, um, dense brush. Um, and in terms of the public, uh, I'm a serious concern about asking people to cross, essentially, Hockley Road is a highway. On a curve from the south side across to the north side. Um, without any other provision for same, and people and vehicles travel extremely quickly along that road. Um, so that's a worry for me, um, and I'm aware, uh, just recently, of the Bruce Trail buying vast hundreds and hundreds of acres of land. In this area, uh, the last article I read that they have about a hundred and ten million dollar budget. Um, my concern is that with them buying so much property, I'm, I'm aware they are with tax exempt, to pay less tax. The tax burden of all the land they're now occupying, falls on now taxpayer, taxes have already increased substantially. I'm certainly not complaining about the services in the town, cause they're excellent, just, um, the additional burden on the taxpayers is a huge concern for.
Yeah, I got one more question, one more.
Yeah, the other, my question is, how is council going to address my concerns? But my other and last point is the lack of public consultation with respect to this issue. When they found out it, about it through a friend, uh, who saw a Facebook post, um, and the Bruce Trail's action trying to conserve act. Trying to secure access to my land, that of a private, of a working farm who refused access to the back of my property, as did we. Um, without any public consultation, securing a permit to build a fifty-foot bridge across the road. Before even securing an illegal or viable route across the north to the, so. I wanted to know why we no public consultation, how do you plan to address that, will there be an opportunity for that? Um, and thank you for your attention.
I, I cannot, I cannot.
I have to stand, it was part of your deal.
If I could, uh, if I could address that, uh, we did commit to reopening, uh, the discussion. And, uh, my understanding is that the Bruce Trail has withdrawn its, uh, uh, request to, uh, traverse, uh, municipal property. So, it's over.
Okay, I did not know that.
May I, may I just, thank you very much for coming with your concerns, it's important that. Thank you very much for coming with your concerns, it's important that both sides of this story get, get heard.
Absolutely.
And we have had some, you know, misunderstandings. And I, and I think that going forward, anything with the Brewsterail, we will for sure have public consultation, because it was, it, it was not right what we did.
Thank and appreciate your time, and I also appreciate the Brewsterail, I'm not anti-Brewsterail, just respect all the other issues, it's a concern for everyone, thank you.
Next question, please.
My name is Marion Heron, I'm, live on.
A little bit closer to the mic, please.
Marion Heron, I'm, live on Blind Line in Mono. I'm concerned about property standards, and I know you've mentioned it in the past. Is there anything the town of Mono can do? I see so many properties that are more and more being, not taken care of. Shipping containers, just near, right near where I am, shipping container, all cars, equipment, piled up bags of garbage, all kinds of junk. And, and it's in many properties, I'm seeing this. Is there anything the town can do to address this and attach to that? I know in your letter, you mentioned that Calladon's illegal land use. This becomes part of it, is the town of Mono doing anything to coordinate with the Calladon's illegal land use?
At any point, members of council, please jump in, and, and I'll catch up to the discussion. But we, we do have an answer for you.
Yeah, I very quickly would point out, we do have a land, sorry, sta- standard bylaw. We don't actively go out and enforce it, like all our bylaws, it's, it's complaint driven. So if you've got a property you're concerned about, let us know about it, and we'll send a bylaw enforcement officer to have a look and see if it is violating the bylaw. In terms of your second question, to the best of my knowledge, I mean, we certainly are concerned with what's happening in Calladon, and we have a couple of properties, one of which we've now related charged and taken to court for exactly the same reason that Calladon's concerned, but I don't think, we don't have an active, we're, we're not working with Calladon on this issue, we're watching what's happening down there, we're trying to prevent it from happening up here.
I, I am personally active with the Calladon Citizens Group and the mayor of Calladon on this issue. No, yeah, they, they're kind enough to invite me to meetings and things like that. We have had some singular successes in shutting down operations in the town of Mono, clearing out transport trailers that have been illegally parked on farmland. We have a very, very aggressive bylaw enforcement regime. We are taking people to court, we are getting convictions. And I, I think that's what our residents expect. It does cost money, but the problem is if you don't do it, you get overwhelmed.
The, this is probably gonna be an increasing problem, because Calladon's becoming quite more active on this, and many of the perpetrators of the, particularly the large trailers, are looking for new places to put their trailers. So we're, we're aware of this, we're on to it, but it's not something that the bylaw officer, a bylaw officer can handle themselves. Often, they have to go to court, so it's a lengthy procedure, and we're just stuck with it. But we're, appreciate that you have concern for that, Marion, thank you.
If I could just add that there is a form online that you can fill out with a complaint on any bylaw matter, frankly. And we're obliged to follow up on that. You may not hear what the outcome is, but be, be aware of the fact that when you fill out that form online and submit it, we do take follow up action.
Thank you very much for your question, and yes, it's a big cons- it's a big concern to us all. And I think rural property just in general, after having a few road trips across our, our beautiful country, it's, it's a common thing to get to, oh yeah, let's get some property and I'll just put my stuff there. And the stuff just accumulates and accumulates, and of course, everybody knows the, the big one on, on Highway ten that's been there forever. But the, just a, just a note about our bylaws, that bylaws in general are, are always by complaint. So we're not out, perhaps in parking, we do some, some patrolling, but otherwise, it's, they're not out looking for that, or they may drive by, but if there's no complaint, we don't particularly do any, do anything about stuff. But once a complaint is made, and it's extremely important that you make it, and that you stand up that, and as opposed to wanting to be anonymous about it, it then goes to our, to our clerk's office, where, where the bylaw enforcement takes over, and the council isn't doing it, we're, we're not, once it becomes that, it's, you, you can't be getting questions answered by us. So because then it becomes a legal issue, right? So, so we want our residents to, to always fill out that form, and then to be rest assured that we, we are doing something about it, but things move slowly. And that's a very good point, and it is only through that complaint process for everything that we can track what's happening, and that we can actually then direct staff, and staff can direct bylaw officers, and we can get reports back. So it's very important, I know it's another pain, gotta go fill out a form online. However, if it's a problem, the whole neighborhood watch thing, then report it, and it'll go through the process, and it will be dealt with. And they are, you know, they end up being different things, some are chargeable, some are gotta go to court, gotta go to Supreme Court, and it's, you know, can be lengthy. But the best thing, the start point, is to fill out that online complaint form, and address it to the bylaw department, which is.
Thank you, next question, please.
Just very quickly, the council does get reports from the clerk's department on bylaw activities. And some of those reports are generic, are general in nature, and then some are very specific in nature, but those are usually addressed in camera, because there's an ongoing legal matter involved. But we, we, while we can't micromanage a complaint, once it's made, we do get a, a general summary of, of bylaw enforcement activity. No, they, they go through the clerk.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I.
They follow, they follow the law, but the, but the, the report that comes is in the agenda, so it's a published, pu- pu- public document that is, that everybody has, everybody has access to. It's an, it's annual, is it non, Fred? Semi-annual.
Okay, next one. My name is Emilio Sestra. I have a solution to save taxpayers money, you wanna hear it? Yeah, okay. How many fire hydrants and how many catch basins do we have in the town of Mono? Thousands? Okay. I sent you an email, you did respond, Matt Donner's not here, but my concern is this, okay? Basically, you go out, winter maintenance, you put these stakes into the ground, two by two, eight footers, somebody's gotta cut them, somebody's gotta spray them, somebody's gotta go out and put them there, okay? On a vacation day during Saint Patrick's Day, I saw a town of mono truck, a driver and two people, okay? On Anderson Avenue, getting out of the truck, picking up a steak, putting in the back of the car, the truck, whatever. Let me finish, I'm not done yet, okay? So the amount of money that is being spent on that can be eliminated by one simple thing. The center line of the street, you basically get a can, a yellow paint, and put arrows pointing to that, even to the fire hydrants, and you won't have anybody, three people in the springtime picking up all the stuff. You're gonna save thousands of dollars, so that's the way it is. I have other concerns that I can address, but I'm not an elected official, and I don't work for the city.
That, thank you, that was a great idea, and I did tell Matt about it, and he said that's a great idea, and he's gonna try it. So how and when he's gonna do that, I, you're right, he's not here, you gotta come to a council meeting, he, because they're always here to respond, but he, but no, we thought it was a great idea, but I guess what you, the economies of, of paying people would have been to take them out and spray at the same time, you're right.
Well, you have to cut them, yeah, and they're four bucks apiece.
But they, but yeah, so they didn't do that, but he did think it was, it was an excellent idea, and he's gonna give it a go.
Thank you.
Thank you, next question, please.
Can you hear me? Mister Mayor, members of council, my name's Leslie Jones, I live on Second Line in Mono. My question is quite simple. I'd like to get the council's opinion on the proposed Bill Five at the Ontario Government. And for the, to wondering, what is Bill Five? Would you be willing to address the audience?
I can, I can address that. I certainly have read Environmental Defense's briefing notes on Bill Five. I'm not an expert on it yet, I'm scrambling to get up the learning curve, but we did, John and I were at a county council meeting on Thursday night, and under New Business, we brought this issue up. Raj, our, I forget her formal title, I'm gonna call her Director of Planning, that's, that's not her proper title, but she handles planning. She is more up the learning curve than I am, she gave us a brief descri- description of what she thinks of it. We have until May the seventeenth to get her comments in, she's gonna prepare, we have to do this by email, because we don't have another county council meeting. I've also already told the mayor that I'm gonna bring the same issue up at our Tuesday Mono Council meeting, and I'm hoping we can piggyback on what the county council's gonna submit. But what we're gonna submit, what we're gonna say, I don't know quite yet, but I can tell you that everyone in county council is very concerned about this. So I know our comments are gonna be like, let, let's take it easy here, that, that bill, I quite frankly think some parts of that bill are gonna be unconstitutional.
Excuse me, does anyone here know what Bill Five is? Well, until a week ago, I didn't either, and I've been reading up on it, and I think it's something we might all be very interested in. It's essentially a bill that allows the government to do whatever it wishes to do with land.
It overrides all kinds of other laws.
It's egregious, and it's, it's, it, it's very strong, it's very authoritarian, very strong, and it would affect us all tremendously.
Well, essentially, essentially, it's a.
Thank you for your question.
It's a Trojan horse omnibus bill, and there's a lot, there's a lot of surprises in it. I think Counsel Cape's had something to say on Bill Five.
Well, Sharon can help me if I need help, but it's Environmental Defense that sent out that, the newsletter, they held a webs- a webinar.
I put on a one hour webinar on Bill Five, it was last Wednesday night. It is available on YouTube, so if you just go to the environmental ethics, Bill Five, you will find it on our webinar. We reached together a variety of weeblog.
Thank you, Sharon.
Elaine Keough, Mono Centre Road. My first question is, could you please give us a little more detail about your statement regarding B T C that you made earlier? Oh, wh- wh- which part?
Well, you just said, you made a comment that they're not going there recreating.
Correct, they have, right, because the, because on that particular piece, so, so that the, you know, be, there, there's a lot of issues on this particular issue where they had come to, to council, and council again as a vote against what I wanted voted, so it was that we, that we would let them put a trail to, to, on town owned land while we were waiting to see what to do, in the name of helping people who use the trail safely cross Hawkeye Valley Road. And in order to cross Hawkeye Valley Road and then to connect still up, there were some things that we didn't know about, frankly. It wasn't explained to us at the time, that there were some private properties that the Brewsterail was also going to just go and get permission from. And what's happened is they haven't given the permission, so because they haven't given the permission, the Brewsterail would end up in the same situation where it would end up being kind of like a dead end and have to do, so, so they're not interested in that anymore. But, so that, that's hot off the press this, just this week, to say that, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna back away from that, but there'll, there'll be another, another something.
So my second part is with respect to surplus lands. And the bill, or it's called Unfinished Business, Council Session fifteen dash twenty twenty-two. At that time, there was a recommendation made to council that with respect to surplus lands, the matter be deferred until the town undertook an overall review of its public lands policy and practices as a whole, and consider options regarding the use and management of its public's lands with a twenty-five year horizon, with the full, full participation, by which they meant all public reviews and public, not virtual meetings, be held. I don't see where any of this has happened, and you're, that was an example of council dealing with surplus lands, which I feel as a resident, did not have the right to do so without public consultation and a public meeting. If the public decides that that's what they want, absolutely. But I don't think it's a matter of, for something for council to decide. So I would like to know when we're planning on having this discussion regarding surplus land.
So I, I think I, I can address that. As, as you, as you know, we have a long to do list. We have quite a few things on it, and they're ranked in accordance with difficulty and, and length of time it will take to, to get something into, into the, into the hands of, of the public and council. I think we're frankly, I don't wanna speak for the staff, but I think we're a ways away from a document or a policy that we can put to the public for their comments, and put to council for its consideration. We're a ways away from that, but I do wanna draw a distinction between surplus lands for sale versus what appears to be a piece of Mono land that isn't declared surplus. We were not asked to declare it surplus, the request only was, could we use it? Could a third party use it? And initially, we said yes, and then we said we were reconsidering it, and now that particular section of land is off the table from the standpoint of, of the Brewsterail using it. So when there is a declaration of surplus lands, it sets up a whole process by which we divest ourselves of that land, and it goes out for sale, or it gets disposed of in, in one way or another, that's a very public process. And there are new applications in front of us now to declare any public land surplus.
But does council feel they have the right to deal with surplus, well, call it surplus land, giving any organization, any organization the right to use that land when the Integrity Commissioner clearly stated that there was a monetary value, and there is like, regardless if you put it down a dime, it's got a value?
Well, let's, let's put it two ways, number one, this was presented to us as, as land that was unlikely to be buildable upon, unlikely potentially to get a, an entrance permit onto Hawkeye Road, that was how it was described to us. The problematic, number one, but number two, I think we learned our lesson. And you'll see a very healthy debate about any proposal by anyone, could be Brewsterail, it could be anybody else, to use our, our lands, and I think we've learned our lesson on that, and it's not to be, not to be repeated in the fashion that this was considered.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Hi, I'm Dave Mole, I live on Airport Road, I'm gonna change the subject a bit. I have the firearms bylaw survey, and I'm trying to figure out what my responses should be. So I have a couple of questions, primarily about definitions. Because one of the provisions is within a certain distance, hundred and fifty meters of a park, educational facility, or religious institution, you're not going to be allowed to discharge firearms or a bow. Are there definitions for a religious institution? And there, I'm not sure what the answer to this is, but I'm wondering, there, we have some, some very large properties in the town that belong to religious institutions. We've got the Mother of God Monastery. They've got over three hundred acres. We've got the Taoist Tai Chi facility at Airport Road, the Five Side Road. They've got a hundred acres. We've got the Church of Scientology. They've got two hundred acres between the third and the, and the fourth lines. Are those properties considered in their entirety to be a religious institution? And a supplementary question, what about small historic churches such as Mitchell's Church, Relaisy Church? There's an Anglican cemetery on the seventh line, which has a church building within it. And all, oh yeah, probably the Hawkeley Church as well. All of these buildings are no longer used regularly for religious services, but most of them are used occasionally for some kind of a special event. So would those be captured within this definition or not?
I think, I think the simple answer to your question is, I, I don't think we have a definition, and maybe that's something that needs to be done.
I, I would suggest then that maybe there should be some definitions included in the bylaw so that owners of those properties and neighbors of those properties know what rules apply.
If, if, if we even get to the point of passing a bylaw, then I can assure you there will be definitions in it so that nobody's under, is, is under any other impression. But the, the decision to go public with this at the most complex level of, of, of consultation we have was made precisely because we know that this is a hot topic. We know there's a lot of interest in it. We do not yet have a briefing as to the response to the newsletter, let alone a, a draft bylaw to consider. And I think you'll find that there's a, quite a, there is a division of opinion on this council, and there's a division of opinion amongst the public as to the necessity of anything more complex, complicated than what we currently have. We currently have a bylaw that does prohibit discharge of firearms from municipal land. You know, there's a second bylaw that I, I championed for prohibition against the discharge of firearms at night, which was a problem, except for purposes of protection of livestock. That's the one cutout that's permitted. But it's really premature to, to even assume that we will come out of this process with a bylaw, let alone what the bylaw is going to say.
Thank, thank you very much for your question. I got the survey. It was the first time I'd seen the survey too. What happens with the council? Is council direct staff to do things, and the staff made up the survey? So it's not, it's not passing the buck. That's the way that the, the world works here. So we're the decision makers when we get the information. So we're in an information gathering thing here. So I guess the, I guess the, the point is that to, you know, the, whatever your definition at the minute. But we do have a, for, we did do a first reading of, of a proposed bylaw. And so I, I, I would argue, and I don't have it memorized, but I would argue that there's a definition in, in that. And if there's, you've got it in there, there's not. So then that's something that gets flagged by having the survey, and this is why we have, we're having an extensive process through this. Because things are changing, right? What used to be an old church in, in Hawkeley and is obvious to another three hundred acre farm that you can't see turning to be a religious place, right? So thank you for your input.
I think it's important to know where we are in the stage of this. So it's a very important process. And council actually have had no input into this at, at all. We just recognize that this is something that maybe should be updated. And so as, as Linda has said, the staff has produced this. The next stage is to get feedback from you, and that's what we're doing through the survey and through phone calls that we get, et cetera, et cetera. And we'll have an open, open session on this at council as well, and then we will try and modify it. So we're at a very, very early stage. So I've had a few phone calls and said, Ralph, why are we doing this? Or why do you want that? And I, I don't want that. It's just, it's just, it's, it's the first stage of the proposal, and it's just outlining, it's something to work, work from. It's a, it's a draft, a very early draft.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for that. And I'm glad that you have paid attention to the survey. I appreciate that. And I did just check the bylaw, and that definition is not there. And as has been said, the process is, we respond to a citizen issue that's come forward. We take it, you know, make a motion, which I did. And we have expertise that drafts our bylaws for us, and then we put them out publicly. We did full engagement for this because it's important, and everybody's feedback needs to be gathered. So we need to encourage everybody to go to either the paper version or the online version of this survey and submit either your comments, your questions, or what, whatever feedback you can give us on this. Because once all of that is done, we will take that, we will have a report from staff, and that's where we will have a conversation, and that will direct any decision-making that we do on this matter.
Okay, so everybody in the room should know that the time limit on this is the sixteenth of May. So you've got six days left to make your comments.
So please do. And I, and I have had feedback, and I'm going to talk to staff about this, that it is somewhat, it's somewhat confusing and somewhat dismissive that we've asked for addresses and said that anybody's address that is not in Mono, their comments will be dismissed. Now, I know that there are people who are members of a certain organization who don't reside in Mono, but still, we want to hear what they have to say. So I am going to maybe talk to staff about, I'm going to talk to staff, not maybe talk to them, and maybe we can separate feedback that we've received from people who don't live here and people who live here, and, and look at the whole picture. So I do want to just put that out there. And I do also want to clarify that the goal of this bylaw was to respect the rights of firearm and bow owners while prioritizing safety, well-being, and security of the broader community. And I did consult to the Dufferin North Peel Anglers and Hunters. I went to hear from them what they thought about this. Some people have misinterpreted when I said that, that they have agreed to this. They do not. And I went away knowing that they would not agree to a bylaw that restricted the rights of, of those that we don't want to restrict rights over. So I just want to clarify that. So we want to hear everybody's thoughts, and the way to do that is through this survey so it can get in the report from staff, and then the council can have a full conversation with the public input. So thank you for being interested and participating.
Thank you. Next question. I think we have six people in line. It's unlikely we'll get to any further. So please come up and fire away.
Okay. Thank you so much. I hope you, you guys here, right? Okay. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and the council. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and the councillors and the ladies and gentlemen. Actually, I have two comment questions, and my name is Roshan Galla, and I live in, actually, I moved, three weeks, I moved to the Mono. I'm on the seventh line. Thank you. I actually, I moved from the Aliston, not far away. And because we chose this one because of the land and are very quiet and good neighborhood. That's why we decided to move to the Mono, and I hope it will be stay as it is. I don't want to move anymore after this because I'm very tired for the moving. Anyway, simple, like, when I was in the Aliston, I paid for the property tax. Already only for, I have a three thousand five hundred square feet house, and I paid only four thousand four hundred something. Once I moved to this house, it's three thousand three hundred square, which is a little bit smaller, but I pay almost ten thousand. And it's a quite remissly high. And I have no idea why that much of high, like nine thousand something, but I close to say ten thousand. And it is like, that house, like, I pay less, and this house I pay more. And I have no idea why it is. And I asked my owner who was sort of the house, she says she have no idea as well. Yes.
That question?
Yeah, I have another question, but if you want to answer that question, you can go ahead.
Um, that's very interesting. My, my question is, how long were you in the house in Aliston? Was it before twenty sixteen?
We moved to Aliston two thousand eighteen.
Because our, our val- house values, our property values are still, if you've had a house for a long time, it's still, and it hasn't changed hands, then the valuation of it is still at twenty sixteen prices. Versus if a, and if a house changes now, then the value goes to the NPAC, and then that is the new value. And we all pay the same mill rate, so it's, you know, it's
Is it common, is it almost ten thousand?
On the value of your house. So, and, so
Only to get the, like, I have to contact the NPAC to get the right assessment?
So that would be the, that would be the first people to see whether they had assessed it. And, and since you got information still about your house, it's only three weeks ago, your house in Aliston, it would be interesting to know, to look at those documents and see what the, that, when the date of the valuation was on that property, just so that you're comparing apples and, apples and oranges. Because no, we don't have, we have, and, and I don't know about Simcoe, but I do know with respect to Dufferin County, we pride ourselves, perhaps erroneously, that we have the lowest tax rate of, of the, of a town, of the towns in the, in the county of Dufferin. I would expect that, that Simcoe's held a little higher just because Simcoe's bigger and got all sorts of things going on. And so therefore, I, I wonder about the, when the Aliston house was valued. Because it does go by size. It goes by size and numbers of bathrooms and number of bedrooms in a house that NPAC uses, and also the land, how, how much land you have. So I, I talked to them.
Yeah. And can I ask the second question, or will you want to answer? Not. Yeah, wait, wait. Okay, the second question. I only, only three, three question, like the second and one more.
I don't think we've addressed your question fully yet.
No, I didn't.
Okay, so
I asked one of the first question.
I know. We, we want to make sure we answer your first question.
Okay, go on.
I do have a question for you, though, if you can tell me more. Did you also pay a water bill?
No.
No?
No. I have a, the well, well water. I'm in Aliston, I did, Aliston, I have a city water, but here I have well water.
Okay, but I, yes, it's okay. Thank you.
I, I'm going to give you my card. I'd like to talk to you in more detail because my information has just slipped to me.
I'm in the seventh line, EHS.
Suggests that, that when, when you do comparators between municipalities, you look at the so-called tax rate. And it's usually expressed as a, as a one point zero four or a point four five, or whatever the municipality happens to be. And my information is that our tax rate is less than New Tecumseh, and actually considerably less. So I, I'm a little confused with, with the, the possibility that you're, you're paying more taxes here in Mono than you were in, in, in Aliston. And maybe there is a remedy through the NPAC organization to appeal your assessment.
Okay, I will contact the NPAC for that question. And the second one, how much you spending money to maintain gravel road for year?
Well, our, our roads, our roads, the roads department takes up sixty percent of our budget.
No, no, no. How much you spending to maintain?
I, I don't, I personally don't have the, the number in front of me, but I can get that for you. But it, it, it's sixty percent of, of, it's millions, and it's, uh, there, there are no monies to be saved by paving, in my personal opinion.
But you, you pay, you doing that one, like you guys doing the each year, sixty mil, sixty million or sixty million?
No, it's sixty percent. Sixty percent of our budget goes towards
That one for each year you're spending. So insert that one.
We spend about two point five million dollars a year on our roads. Just, just on road maintenance.
Like, I'm asking the, the gravel, gravel road, not that's for, the gravel road you spending, because this is my understanding. Gravel road making the, like, a lot of dust, okay? And like, you know, gravel road making the everywhere is dusty, because I noticed. And like, all this, the, like, the, the things that go to the, the drain channels and everything, whatever the, on site. And then you, next year, like, you put the gravel and cover it, and next year you put the same thing again, and same thing, and it's ongoing. Instead of that, if you put the paving, it will be less maintenance, and it will be less issue.
This is great. Welcome to Mono. We have, we have, we have more gravel roads here in Mono than we do paved roads. And we spend more money on paved roads than we do on gravel roads. And together, it costs the, as we say, sixty percent. So the maintenance is different, right? First of all, to build the paved road costs more money than to build the, the gravel road. And you can't just put pa- you can't just put pavement on the gravel that we've got, and that's going to solve it. It then would be, you have to have the good base and it all, like, so we've had lots of studies done and lots of analysis and assessment of our roads. And you need to, I'll send you, send you the, or maybe the mayor, since you're going to contact him, or the other one. But that, the, the agenda to look up, to, to read about our report. Because once you find out a little bit more information about our roads, it really answers a lot of questions that when
But at least you can do like some part of the road on this year and some part of the, the, this year. At, at least that will be, like, somewhere on any
Let, let, let me put, let me put this into perspective, and it's more fun, fun with facts. For every kilometer of gravel road that we rebuild as a paved road, okay? Million dollars. That's, that's per kilometer. So what does that equate to in terms of a tax increase? Roughly, every hundred thousand dollar increase equates to a one percent increase in taxes. So in order to, to pave a kilometer of road would result in a ten percent increase.
But anyway, you guys increase in the property tax, right? But that's will, we go, no matter what this go up.
Different debate, but I'm just, I'm just putting it into context as to why, why you're not seeing more paved roads out there. Incredibly expensive, and quite frankly, there are a lot of people who like living on, on gravel roads.
If, yeah.
Thank you for your question. Sir, I think your question's been answered. We'll be here all day for talking about roads in Mono. You have your question. We really got to move through.
I'll follow, I'll follow up with me.
You've got five seconds.
Is there any restriction for a hobby farm in the Mono City?
You're welcome.
No. Because my previous owner said it's not allowed to do, do here. That, this won't work.
Well, I, actually, there's no restriction. I don't, I don't know of any restriction from having a, having a farm.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Come to a council meeting.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, and welcome to Mono.
Come out to all the council meetings. We want to see you.
Good morning again. Just want to say to the mayor and council and the staff that are here, they're buying the coffee and everything else and cleaning up after us. Thank you for being here on a Saturday morning. And what I, what we present here today, I hope you guys don't take it personally or directed, directly at you. My other part to being here was as far as discharge survey. I found it very, very disappointing that I would need an interpreter, perhaps someone with a law degree to understand the language of it. It wasn't very, written very simple for someone to say agree or disagree. It's, you agree to disagree with the agreement that we're disagreeing with. And I basically found it very difficult for someone in a senior to read it, to properly answer it in the way they feel. Second of all, you know, you want us to answer questions that you don't have regulation regarding. As the gentleman said, you know, what's the definition of, of a religious center? If I don't know what the definition is, how can I answer that question properly? So that should be addressed before putting a survey out. So that should be addressed before putting a survey out. Third of all, we have enough provincial and federal regulation regarding firearms in this country that I think what we need to spend the money on is an enforcement. And being a firearm owner myself, as a hunter, which leads to my fourth part. If you take away the discharge of a firearm, or you give me any kind of restriction, you're taking away my right to hunt and to put food on my table. And as a hunter and an angler, conservation is number one to us. It's the one thing that we pay as anyone the most to buy or to maintain. I can play tennis for almost for free. I can play soccer for minimum dollars. But as a hunter, we pay and pay and pay. And part of the reason is about compres- co- conservation. Which then goes to the other part. If you do enforce this, keep in mind, the population, if you're understanding about, I say, um, the environment, the deer population will boom. You'll be dealing with more deer in the middle of roads and more fatalities. And for those out there that think a firearm is a weapon, it is not. A knife can be a weapon. Your car is a weapon. Well, in that scenario, sir, just to keep in mind, there is the O P P to contact, Police Department, Chief Firearms Officer. Of course they can. If someone points a gun at you, sir, believe me, they're going to jail. It's not a joke. There is, there is systems in place to make sure even people, any kind of mental handicap, not to own one. And I'll share a personal experience. My daughters, both of them hunt. Well, one doesn't anymore, simply because, and I share this as a personal. In her younger age, she had in, in, in elementary school, in high school. Fact is, words were said, she was upset, she was still, you know, she's in her teens, she shared that she wanted to harm herself. At the time, she had a minor's license. Now, after assessment and so forth, the doctors, no issues, but that was recorded on her record. When she applied for her firearms license, that was flagged, and that was six years later. And I, and I think that that system is in place because, in essence, there's someone monitoring that someone has some kind of mental health challenge, they cannot access a firearm. So, when I say this is more for the reason of saying there are laws in place, there are regulations, what we need is enforcement. And if someone's being foolish, or ignorant, or just an idiot. Okay, so, but again. All, point I'm saying is the, the survey needs to be more clarified. At the same time, keep in mind, hunting is a right provided by the province to put food on the table. And we ask that you keep that in mind. Thank you.
I do.
What's?
I, I, I do just wanna say thank you. And, and I'm sorry, um, we'll have to maybe have a look at the survey, I'm not sure. Because if it's hard for people to respond to, then we're not gonna get the answers that we need. So that's very good feedback, and we'll wait to hear what the other feedback is. And if it turns out our survey is not getting to the questions that we need answered, then we'll have to revisit that. So thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, uh, Rob Ballston. I'd like to point out I'm not wearing a bullshit shirt. So, um, yeah, it's quick, it's quick, quick question. Um, or a recommendation, uh, if you could look at the, uh, the comment system. Earlier, there was a, uh, uh, I'll explain. So earlier it said if, if, uh, you want bylaws enforced, uh, you have to make a complaint. Uh, but it wasn't clear what happens to that complaint. It gave me the impression it went into a closed loop system. In other words, people weren't getting updates on what was happening. It should be, uh, or it was an open loop system, it should be closed loop. So, somebody makes a complaint, uh, the town should, um, say we'll get to it two weeks, thirty days. Here's the update. The update could be no progress. Um, or it could be, here's what we've done, or if there's legal issues, this is what we can tell you. So about, and it can be open to everybody, so everybody knows what's happening. So that people can understand if they make a complaint, they see progress, whoa, no progress. Uh, they get through, they can get through, you probably minimize the number of telephone calls and emails. Uh, so it should be closed in. You should get back to people and all the taxpayers on what has been happening, uh, what progress has been made. Uh, and, uh, like the ultimate assistance if you needed to get something set up, if you're too busy. But, uh, I'd like to request that you look at having it as a closed loop system. So there's updates on each complaint. It doesn't have to be daily, it could be periodically, but it should be closed loop, in my opinion. Thanks.
So, I.
Thank you.
I, I partially miss, misspoke when I said that you may not find out what the outcome of your complaint is. Because one thing we have done, and I think we're unique as a municipality in having done this, is we have a, a page uh, on our website that shows all of the outstanding legal actions that flow from uh, property standards or, or other bylaw complaints. If it goes to court and information is sworn, public document, and we try and keep that, that list updated so that you can see when the next court appearance is, and ultimately what the outcome is, whether there's been a fine or whether it's been dismissed uh, or otherwise dealt with. Um, that brings me to one of our successes, uh, inadvertent, uh, inadvertently. There was a tra- transport trailer collection starting, uh, very close to this building. And, uh, all of a sudden, one morning, uh, York Regional Police executed a search warrant on that property, discovered stolen property, property, and it's all been cleaned up. Now, we didn't, we didn't lift a finger. We didn't lift a finger, but the police did. And that property is no longer an issue for us. But that was one of the properties that had legal action pending.
Just some rules about, about the, the bylaw and so on. That when you put, you put in a, a complaint, but you're complaining about the guy on the other side of the fence. In the world that we live in, that person's privacy is protected, and, and so are their rights. And so you're not gonna get feedback. You're, you're done your citizen duty and hopefully we'll, we'll ca- calm down the angst that we have when something is going on on the other side of our fence that we don't like, or that's, but that's hindering us. Um, but then it's in, then it's in the hands of, of the, the, the law. And we need to fight, it would be nice to, to have all sorts of information and updates and have our clerk's office send and so on, but that, that can't happen. But as, as the mayor says, if the person doesn't, um, the person doesn't take, take to the gentle reminder of what our bylaws are and doesn't conform, then it moves into a, um, a, a, a real, a charge, which is completely out of the hands of, of the municipality. Now it's in the courts of, of Ontario. So that, it, I understand where you're coming from, particularly if you personally have, or you have a, have a friend who's, who's had something that is um, very disturbing going on on the side, you know, it's all, all very well to just say it's my view, but also, you know, there are hazards to things and people storing stuff and whatnot. Um, but we also have to take into account the rights of, of the, um, the offender, right?
Yeah, I, I understand that. In, in business, they, they manage issues and complaints. So in your example, if you complain about your neighbor, there should be an update, um, on that complaint, but we've got your complaint. We're investigating it, or no action. You don't have to give people's address about your neighbor. Or it's bound illegal, and next month it's still out legal. So I don't agree that you can't provide updates. You can provide updates on anything. Uh, maybe the information can't be shared, but that's an update. Thank you, sir. Next question.
I thank you. My name is Iverson Pendleton. I'm a resident of Mono. I was at my first council meeting a couple weeks ago, and it was a very uh, good experience. I started upstairs, talked to Clerk Simpson, and we had a good, uh, initial discussion, and then I came to meeting and there was a lot less, a lot less people here, so I had a little more time to chat. But council was very gracious and courteous of me and, uh, and heard me out. And I'm here to continue, sorry, yeah. Um, I'm here to talk about the discharge of firearms bylaw, and I'll try to keep it concise, and I'll be coming back. So any questions I don't ask here, I'll keep coming up. But, um, I just find it's really a redundant process. We already have federal laws, we have lots of laws uh, for, to be a legal firearm owner and hunter. Um, you have to pass all these courses. Um, it is very serious if you're caught with a gun out of, like, simple things can be a very serious offense, and you can lose your right to hunt and own a gun very easily. Um, it's not, it's not a thing to be taken lightly. I just find some very serious redundancy here. Um, do other rural townships have similar bylaws? Hey, they do? And is this based on it? Is it based on statistical analysis? Where, where are the dangers? Where have people been hurt? Where are the, where have the policemen called? Um, because I don't think there's statistical backing to this. You know, we're, we're being lumped into violent, criminal, illegal kind of owners, right? Where's the mapping? What, what, what part of my properties will I be able to shop, shoot on, right? A lot of people only have an acre to, 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 to fire their firearms. If you're, if you're a responsible hunter, you're gonna be lining up your gun to make sure it's, it's in, it, it can hit a target, right? Um, I apologize for getting my heart ringing up here, but it's very, I'll try to slow down, but I just don't think it's reasonable and ethical to be even compiling this data on, on, on gun owners. Like, what if the data gets into the wrong hands? Now someone knows I own a gun at my house, like. It says right on the, the survey, do you own a gun?
Yeah, I could. The data we're collecting is people's thoughts on the bylaw. So you need to take the actual bylaw that I have right here in front of me and go through it and, and come back to us with this specific feedback about why that's restrictive for you, because that's not what we want to do. We do not want to strict, restrict, uh, legal, legitimate hunting, um, that exists in our community. Uh, we're trying to, and there are, in the bylaw, it quotes, makes statements about other communities where they have specific uh, bylaws around discharge of firearms. It's right in the bylaw.
Such as?
Well, it's in the bylaw. Like, so.
References to other.
The different references are in the actual bylaw.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, so it's, the clerk is very thorough, and he does an awesome job. And so we construct a bylaw based on all of the good input from what happens around other municipalities and elsewhere and to what our purpose is, is to, to ensure safety. And I know that the Dufferin Peel, uh, hunters and anglers are also on board with safety. I know that. But, but still, we need the feedback that says this specific line in this bylaw is a problem because.
Okay, I don't, I don't see the safety concerns. I don't.
Can I, can I jump in? There will be lots of opportunity once the survey results are collated and, and released uh, to come back to council and engage in discussion of the survey results, as well as the wording of any proposed bylaw. Um, I think the reason we're addressing this is we aren't a hundred percent rural. Uh, we have subdivisions. Uh, we have areas of the town that are what we used to call strip lots, very, very narrow lots and, and multiple homes on those, on those lots. So they are, are not dissimilar to Purple Hill or Cardinal Woods or, uh, one of our suburban areas. So the debate is, should there be, um, unrestricted discharge of firearms in close proximity to built-up areas? That is one of the things that we're trying to get an answer to. But I, you know, say, uh, to use an expression, save your powder uh, for when this comes back onto our agenda, we will publicize it and give everybody an opportunity to address it.
Well, I respect that, but it does seem like you're putting the cart before the horse, and we're gonna have an upset apple cart here, right?
We're, we're responding to residents who have concerns.
Residents have concerns with taxes and a lot of other things too, right? If you put out a survey about that, you'll get a answer while lower taxes too, right? Uh, okay, I'll get, I'll keep it short here. I, I just request that there is some mapping done to prove where this bylaw will, where you can and can't, uh, use a firearm. Uh, if N V, N V C A and N E C are, you know, doing a mapping thing, they're, they release it before so you can see what the affected areas are. So that's my request. And I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have time. Questions?
Hi, I'm Brian Scott. I live on Mono Center Road. Um, my question's around community engagement. Uh, so, uh, I've been mostly around council meetings. So, given the time the council meetings happen, it's often difficult for me to not attend because I'm working and lots of people work. Um, but I've noticed when I do get there, I would pass a little while that, um, like in-camera sessions are happening sort of mid-meeting or all over the place. I understand it's because somebody you would need at this place, the lawyer or whoever, um, can only meet at that time. But from my perspective, if we're paying the lawyer, they're working for us, we should be able to set council meeting is this time, and it's the standard time all the time. It's, it's, it's one of those things that really restricts me as a, as a citizen to come and attend a meeting and then have to go out of the meeting and who knows how long the in-camera sessions, and I, you know, I, I log off because there's other things I have to do. But if it was consistently at the end of a meeting or beginning of the meeting, whenever, then it's one of those things for community engagement that would really, that could, that's easy to do.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Point, and I think historically, we've tried to have them at the end of meetings. I know of one municipality not far away that, that has their in-camera meetings at the beginning. So citizens don't know when their council meeting starts. And they wait, and they wait, and they wait.
Well, you're absolutely right, and we've discussed, and we have discussed when to have it. And so it is at the end of the agenda. If you look, it's always at the end of the agenda, but the issue becomes that, that the actual meeting, we don't get through the agenda before that time that we have had to make an appointment with, with, and it's the lawyer usually, right? Um, so yeah, so thanks for the feedback, and we'll, I'm glad to hear that you're on, you're watching. It's good that you're logging in. I like it.
Please.
Um, my name is Cassette Pathak, and I live on the third line north of Mono Center Road. And, um, I'm sorry I came late to the party today, but I really did enjoy the presentation, and I thank M C Squared for producing the opportunity to get together. Um, from what I heard in the presentation and in the discussion after was the very important role of a town planner. And I would like to know what the structure is in Mono now and what kind of a structure are we looking going forward to include that very important role?
We don't have a town planner right now. We use a consulting firm, which is very good. We did put an advertisement out for that position. We had several applicants who qualified. We made an offer, and we were turned down. So we're back to the drawing board. Uh, it's not easy to get a planner, but right now I will say from everything, we, we have an assistant or a technician. And the consulting company we're using, the name of which escapes, we just know, is, is very good, but we're using, we're using a consulting company.
Is that a temporary measure?
Yes.
And it's the end of the academic year now, so is it a good time to advertise again for some new, new graduates?
It's an, it's an active, it's an active, um, um, search for, for a planner. And because it's now been a number of, of years, um, that we do have, we do have, the consultant Deborah is, you know, con- consistent now. We get the same person, and so, and with respect to cost, if anybody's worried, it's, we, we've, it's, we're not paying too much, and it's not, wouldn't be cheaper doing anything else or whatever. But you're right, obviously, we need.
You need somebody who lives here or close, who's well aware of everything, so, in my opinion.
Well, that, that's right. And it's, we need that for, for lots of things. I need somebody to mow my lawn too, right? Like, it's, it's hard to find people, and so you have to wait for the, wait for the right one to come along.
All right, call it, uh, give it. Call, call that. Um, I think your question is, uh, are we trying to get a, a permanent planner here? And the answer is yes. Okay, and we're trying to get the right, we also.
Okay. And we're trying to get the right, we also try to get the right person. So I would suggest, not that it's a bad thing to just be out of school, but that's probably not the person we want.
I don't know about that.
Anywhere, I think that we're just about it. We said we'd end by noon, and so John, fire away.
I, I just wanted to comment on curiosity. We didn't get one question about internet. And I've got all kinds of information.
Well, I think that, I'll hold the microphone close here. People who normally are dreading that we're finished by noon, but I can guarantee you, we're going to finish by noon. I just wanted to say, I thought this was a really good meeting, and I've been through a lot of these over the years. And they, when they work well, they do exactly what you want, which is get a lot of good information out and have access. Get to meetings that we don't want to. And it always shocks me when I go, and we're about to see council meeting on taxes, and how many people show up? Nobody. One, two. And so when we've talked about with council, the ones we deal with, they say, hey, don't you think anyone would come? And now we have an answer. I think that this was a very productive conversation with you. I found the, the thing that strikes me the most when we do this is just how complicated your job is running a municipality, and the kinds, look at the range of questions we got. So first, very much for being counselors. And thank you very much for the Saturday morning to respond to very, very interested in what you're doing. Secondly, I'd like the board members that it runs smoothly, because really a lot of good work that by law put the time in. Very happy working with this board. I'd be Thank you all. We come in. Our board, by the way, is board, it's a bunch of volunteers. Because they're part of the unity. And we like what we're trying to do, and I think that there's all more communication, and I think we saw that. But great work by the council, great work by the audience, and great work by our board. So now go home, sit out in the sun, tan, and we'll be all, actually, that doesn't work for me. And thanks to the staff bringing this together.
And, and on behalf of council, we'd like to thank M C Square for, for organizing and hosting this meeting. There's a lot of work involved. And it's, it's a relief not to have to, to chair a meeting and have you folks actually run it. I think it was a resounding success, and we look forward to future ones.
Partnership works.
I think it does.
Can I just ask, is anybody? Did we get to all the questions? Did, did, is anybody leaving having a question? Did we get to them all? Because that, that, we did, eh? Nobody's
Does anyone want to hear about internet?
See, I can, I can give you a very quick update. So, your worship, if I could just mention, there are actually cards on the table there. If anyone has a question that didn't get asked, there are cards on the table. You can fill it out, leave your question with, and they'll be passed to council.
So the, so the update, people say, what, what's happening with the project? What's happening with Rogers? What's happening with Fusion Tech, the subcontractor? They have been in a bit of a standstill because of the load season. That came to an end on May first. So they're back at it. And as of yesterday afternoon at four eleven, we have issued over thirty permits for activity on mono roads. And those are short segments, some of them are long segments. They're called road occupancy permits. It's basically our permission to, to somebody to install equipment on our road allowance. County of Dufferin has issued fifteen. And if you go to our website, you'll see an up-to-date map that shows you where the permits have been issued. Doesn't mean there's activity there, but it means that they have the green light from both us and the county of Dufferin to install cable. The, the, that's conduits that you see on, on Hawkley Road as an example. And Town Line. But those are, there is activity ongoing, and we keep the pressure up on Rogers to fulfill their commitment of wiring the entire town.
If, if I might, because I asked the same question. But you did get the letter in the mail that said that there's a big study going on in the Mono Agoda Town Line. You did not. Because that's, that's different. We, there, there, there was a citizen petition, which we responded to, and we got in some out, some, some technology to geotech. Yes, exactly. Thank you. So those lines are for geotech. They're going to do some drilling on the roads to find out what's underneath them and all kinds of good stuff that Matt Donner can tell you about, but I just know that, because I asked the question, were those for internet? Not necessarily. And they could also be for, you know, sometimes Bell does location, Hydro does location things. So I think for the most part, those are for the geotech review of the Town Line. I know. I know. I'm so sorry.
Can, can I, can I make a public service? May I make a public service announcement? We're ending early enough that anyone who has brush can take it to our landfill between now and I think three o'clock in the afternoon. We opened up another day, and today happens to be the day.
I think I've noticed that we've got a carbon tax, big block back. Trying with sexist men all too.
Right.
And I'm on seventh line, probably about a kilometer north of Five Side Road. Does that impact our designation as rural?
Yet, yes, yes and no. We are included in what's called the Metro Toronto Census Area, which is ridiculous. There is an island in the middle of Lake Simcoe that is a, a, a reserve, and it is included in the same census area. It makes us ineligible for the rural top-up. And I, I was approached by the Toronto Star some months ago, and they did a fantastic article to point out the absurdity of our exclusion from getting the rural top-up. About a day before the Finance Minister resigned and pulled the plug on the Trudeau government, we had sent a letter saying, we hope your budget passes because they were going to fix that problem. Well, unfortunately, out of, out of luck. It, 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 it really was an artificial rule having to do with eligibility for the rural top-up to the carbon tax. It, it was nothing more than that, and it was absurd.